This meeting to order, please. Ms. Byram, can we have roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quinter.
Here.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Uh, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Hornick, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Hearing none, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. So with that being said, we will drop down to Superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. On the dock for this evening, starting with letter A, consideration of proposed revision to policy GBQ. And Ms. Dawson presented this at last week's meeting, and this is with respect to retirees and health insurance benefits post 65 years old.
Were there any questions from the board? And I will say, Ms. Daniel was so kind and came up to me after the meeting, and she gave me another resource, so I haven't had time to call them. I will, but yeah, so that will have at least two resources for our retirees, so that'll be great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms., I believe you said this is what the county wanted to do also, is that correct? Or since we're the majority, do we lead here?
Um, actually, they're already doing this.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, hearing no other questions, I would entertain a motion to accept this, please.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, policy GBQ as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for your support. Next will be letter B, consideration of proposed revision to policy IKC. This was with respect to, um, a slight change with respect to the 50-50 summative grading that primarily impacted, uh, most of this impacted our secondary students. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Everyone good with this?
Yeah, I mean, I remember we put this in when we were having a lot of home, a lot of teaching at home and so forth. And, uh, I would say, to me, it's just going back to more or less what we had before we had COVID, so, I mean, it's, it's fine with me.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins, would you, um, like to make a motion then?
Yes, ma'am. Let me get up here to top C. I make a motion, we approve policy IKC as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Now, just a little brief information as we, as we move forward. Uh, we've spoke with secondary principals, we being myself and Ms. and Dr. Honnicker, and, um, looking at the, the grading scale, um, and working, we'd like to get some teachers together and start looking at the grading scale across the board and, um, the, the benefits of looking at a 10-point grading scale through the whole way through, as well as some stratification of letter grades within that scale. Um, and so we are gonna have a task force of, of teachers that are gonna meet with our principals at the high school and the middle school level and come back and also looking at a program for credit recovery as well to help all of our students get their ticket to the future. So that will be part of our, um, that will be part of our work as we move through of this school year and come to you guys hopefully in the, in the late fall to early spring with some recommendations of, as far as a, an enhanced grading scale and mechanisms moving forward. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next is letter C, which is the presentation of our out-of-county tuition rate. And Mr. Honnicker is here to discuss and to answer any questions that the board may have.
Take all this off. Uh, good afternoon. I'm here to present the, uh, tuition rate for 2022, 2023. And as I was reading over this, I realized I had transposed the number, so the last line should read yet, the recommended out-of-county tuition rate for 2022, 2023 is forty-seven oh nine, not four thousand seventy-nine dollars, which is a forty-five dollar increase over the current rate, so, um, any questions from anyone?
Uh, I didn't, is this a typo?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should say forty-seven oh nine.
No, Jim's is right.
Oh.
We didn't refresh yet.
I should've texted you. So you could take care of it before I got up here. No questions?
How many students does this typically impact?
Uh, Mr. Berry, would you have the answer?
Ballpark.
Oh, I see.
And what are, what would be the reason that students would be out of district?
We have some students who, um, live at Woodbury Forest, which is in Madison County, but parents prefer them to come to Orange County schools because of just being so much closer. We may have a student who has, uh, moved out of the county but prefers to continue to stay in Orange County public schools. Uh, so they would be charged tuition.
Okay, and, um, so if they move like halfway through the year, they'd have to pay that forty-seven oh nine?
We would prorate it.
Okay.
Halfway through the school year.
And does this impact homeless students or transient families?
We would do with a homeless student, we would do a best interest determination meeting to determine whether it's best for them to continue school in Orange County or is it best for them to, uh, to start school in the county in which they move.
Okay.
Uh, but if that best interest determination meeting, uh, which involves individuals not just from Orange County, but for those in the county in which they're moving to, um, if that committee determines that it is best for them to stay here, there would be no charge for tuition.
Okay.
Same way with foster children.
Okay.
And to the best of my knowledge, we, it's been several years since we increased this rate, correct?
We, we didn't last year, I know, and I, and if we did a year before that, it was probably even a smaller amount.
Yeah, I, I don't remember it. I know we didn't last year, and I, I can't remember that we did the year before either. I, so I think it's been several years since we've been, we've changed it.
This is, this is something we normally had done almost every year.
Oh, yeah, but we typically hadn't had an increase.
And I think last year, the numbers just were so close, and we said, we'll just leave this, I mean, is what we did.
Well, just to follow up on what they were talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong. The, most of the students we have that come from out of the county are because of our own employees. We let them come without this charge, so it's only, it's only people that are not connected with their school system. And as far as I know, in the past, it's been one or two. It's not, I mean, we have almost 5,000 students, we're talking about one or two students.
Okay, so if a teacher from, say, Spotsylvania started working in Orange and they're, they wanted their children to attend here, that would be...
They don't have to pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, if everyone is comfortable with this, um, I'd entertain a motion to go ahead and accept this.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, 2022, 23 out-of-town, out-of-county, uh, tuition rate.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for your support. Up next is letter D. This is an update on the contract, our Quarles, Quarles contract. And, uh, Mr. Sarver is here to provide you all an update on where we stand.
Good evening, Board. Um, just wanted to give everybody an update. So we sent, uh, Quarles a renewal notice when we made, when we all took action, and they send us back information. Um, they have sold a portion of their bulk fuel delivery to a company called Superior Propane, which comes along with a cost increase. So we have some options here, and the cost increase is related directly to transport costs. They're basically, that's what their, um, their profit margin is based on, their actual costs. So for ultra-low sulfur diesel, um, we've gone from seven cents with the previous contract to twenty cents per gallon. With gasoline, um, twenty-seven cents versus twelve point five cents per gallon. And with heating oil, thirty-five cents per gallon versus twelve and a half cents a gallon. So it's not an insignificant increase. I've looked into the state motor fuel program as an option. However, Quarles also holds the contract with the state and has taken down their website to join it, so I suspect that's being renegotiated currently. The other option is to put this out to competitive bid. Now, everybody who's been to the gas pump knows that right now might not be the best time to try to secure new costs. So based off of what I, you know, what my peers have talked about doing in their localities, um, and, you know, looking at the options, I think we go ahead and sign this contract with the increased costs. This is supposed to go out, we were supposed to go out to bid in the spring anyway. Hopefully, we'll see some stabilization with the fuel market and we'll get more competitive pricing. But, um, at this time, this is my recommendation. Um, OPUS is a, um, is the pricing standard that's used, um, across the country. And the profit margin is, is, you know, basically on top of that rack rate. They, they publish the daily, uh, fuel price on a daily basis, so you can research really quickly.
And a key point to, Justin, I think you said, we were planning, this is due to go back out in the spring for bid, correct?
That's correct.
So, okay.
I'm just confused as to if we have a contract and we're allowed to renew it, how can they go back and say, oh, nope, not really, can't?
They have the option whether to renew or not as well.
They, okay.
So the estimated cost, is that total or is that in the increase?
That's our total fuel budget, uh, for the current school year.
How long do you think it would take to, um, see how Quarles works with the state?
Um, I, I couldn't, I don't have a, I don't have an indication. I will say this, that they, they have been very good to work with. We've never had an issue with, um, the customer service side with Quarles, and I would assume that they're, uh, you know, I assume that we're receiving service from the new company currently. They're still delivering out of Quarles trucks, um, but we have not seen a change in service. That's a huge part of it for our fleet, uh, to making sure we always have fuel available. So going to another vendor, that's always the risk we run as well. But, I mean, that's certainly something that we would entertain, but we're also in a position right now where we need to get this locked in before the school year starts.
Okay. Yeah, and the contract then would be until the spring or just the entire rest of the year?
Till June thirtieth.
Okay.
Well, I'm comfortable with it, just given on the, the information based on what Mr. Sarver has just relayed to us.
Are you confident that we could stay within the budget, given these outrageous price increases?
The, what, what we actually see, the impact on the fuel bill will be, it seems rather large here, but it, it will be a few hundred dollars worth of difference, so yeah, I believe that will be, provided we, you know, we've, Gary made some adjustments to our budget, thankfully. You know, if gas prices get, you know, above five dollars fifty cents, six dollars, and our cost, which includes no tax, what you're seeing at the pump is about a dollar more than what we're paying currently. So, um, as long as we, as long as fuel prices don't climb, that's where we're gonna have our biggest issue with budgets, is if the trend continues and that, the base price continues to climb.
We had, the, the budget for the previous year was five hundred thousand. When we got the additional state funding, we bumped that up to nine for, just because of the price of fuel, but obviously, it was probably a good idea after this happened, so I, I, I'm like Justin, I think we'll be fine with that number, but I'm also glad that the state was able to provide funding for us to do that.
Right.
Yeah, I'll put forth the motion that we accept that as presented, just, we gotta hedge this and
I agree.
can't wait around on it, so, makes sense.
Is there a second?
I would second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sarver.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Sarver is here also. Um, he will stay up here as we discuss letter E, which is the recommendation for our school bus purchase. Mr. Sarver?
Thank you. Um, we have put out to bid, uh, proposed, request for proposals, uh, for purchasing of our upcoming, um, seven school buses. This municipal purchase agreement is the best competitive, um, contract came from the Community Bank of the Chesapeake. Uh, the interest rate came in at two dol, or two, two point four one percent, and, uh, the total cost of debt would be twenty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. Now, the county is the entity that has more or less decided that we, this is the direction we, you know, they're comfortable going, so they're, they've built this payment into the, uh, capital budget. Uh, so this is mostly just for informational and procedural purposes. But, um, this is, this process has worked very well for us. We've gone through two full cycles, and we're making our last payment on our third cycle of this, so this is working out very well for us.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions?
No.
All right.
Justin, Justin knows that the wording I got removed, so I have nothing to say. I'm, I'm for it now.
All right, so, Mr. Hopkins, would you like to, um, make a motion to go ahead and accept this then?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I make a motion, we, uh, approve the school birch, the school bus purchase financing as presented.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
While I have the floor for a second, just to update you on the bus purchase. Sunny Merriman, we, we're gonna be purchasing from Sunny Merriman Incorporated by seven new Thomas buses. Um, my last conversation with our salesperson was, um, we are currently looking at a late October delivery date. Originally, we had given, been given a delivery date of first week of July. This is directly related to the supply chain. Something that threatens this delivery date even further is that Cummins, the manufacturer of the engines, has placed Thomas built buses on, um, a restriction. We could be looking at his latest February. So, working with the dealer, could see if we can come up with some other options, if we can switch power plants as a possible solution. But, um, you know, this is supply chain effect, Mary.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarver, Madam Chair, members of the board, for your support. At this time, I would invite Mr. Berry to talk about and give an update on the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick and members of the board. Uh, back in the spring, uh, Ms. Quinter asked us, uh, when we presented policy EEA, to look at, uh, a statement or a sentence that was part of that, um, in regards to the, um, this sentence, or when the student engages in the health, safety, or endangers the health, safety, or welfare of other riders, and striking that part of that sentence. Uh, it was then requested that that be taken to the Safe and Supportive Schools Task Force to get their input in it, uh, or on that. Uh, that task force is made up in, of law enforcement, school administrators, uh, central office employees, including our, uh, social workers, myself, numerous others from the community, some parents. And in presenting that to them, uh, that could, task force had the concern that while, uh, or, or taking that out, the part, the, when the student endangers the health, safety, or welfare, or of other riders, that it might make it more difficult to actually enforce inappropriate behaviors that are now, not now specifically spelled out. An example was given, and sadly, this takes place, or has taken place. A student relieving themselves in a cup on the bus, happened at least once, uh, last year. There's nothing in the policy that states, thou shalt not do such. But, when you can reference back to that it endangers the health, safety, and welfare of other riders, that encompasses some of those things that aren't specifically spelled out. So it is the recommendation of the Safe and Supportive Schools Task Force to not strike that language from the policy.
I guess my concern was with the whole masking situation and, you know, that's, I, it's, I'm sure it's behind us, but with that being an incident, you know, how can we ensure that students who, you know, have religious beliefs that they can't wear a mask, or safety reasons that they can't wear a mask, and that's now going to endanger the health of other students? How can we ensure that student can still be appropriately, um, transported by no fault of their own without us infringing on religious or other health?
And I mentioned that to the committee, and they said they did not see that that played, wearing a mask or not wearing a mask didn't really play into this policy or how this was working.
Okay.
All right. So, given that, would we like to go ahead and approve this?
I just wanted a moment to review policy JFC.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'll approve it, but, uh, why don't we just have a, a normal statement there that that we're not provided, we, we are not required to provide transportation for regular students. Now, I won't know about special ed, or maybe that would just get into too much trouble. But what I'm basically saying, if a student acts up on the bus, the principal has usually been able to say, well, you can't ride that bus anymore. Just a normal student that's acting up. That's because we can take them off the bus at our will.
Well, and I think that that's what the providing transportation is required by federal, federal, state and federal laws and regulations. As you mentioned, Mr. Hopkins, there is nothing that says that we have to provide transportation. And so therefore, we are, uh, providing transportation according to laws and regulations.
Okay, I, that's fine.
So I think that's how we covered.
I have no problem with this. I, I, I just, the general public thinks that we're required to provide them transportation to school, and that's, to my surprise, we're not required to.
I agree with you. The general public thinks that, but I don't know that this policy's gonna alleviate that thought.
Well, I just...
Maybe if we added the word "only" between students and "as", only as required by state and federal laws.
Well, I think if this is what health and safety and all of them has vetted, I, my suggestion is that we go with this particular policy. Let's not add or just subtract, subtract. Take away anything from the policy as, as it is written now.
Well, it, it's probably good because the political, I don't know, I can't speak about the health issue, but the political part of it is, it's gonna have to get awful, awful, awful bad before we're gonna have any mask mandate from our governor, that's for sure.
I'd say, all right, so, Mr. Hopkins, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion, we approve policy EEA as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Nay? All right, policy passes. Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Madam Chair, members of the board, and our last one this evening. And, uh, Mr. Rutter is here for a presentation of, uh, surplus property, and this is regarding a generator that had been used here at Teak, correct, Marshall?
That's correct. Thank you, Dr. Hornick. Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, just like, uh, it says in your notes there, we read everything. We had an old generator here at Teak, uh, wasn't serving our needs, uh, had a couple of power failures, um, last year, and, uh, took quite some time for the IT department, IT department to get the server up division-wide for network. So, uh, we replaced it with a new one, and, uh, instead of throwing the old one away, I reached out to the people that maintained it and who we bought it from, and the heirs are interested in it.
All right.
Well, I'll make a motion, if it's okay, that we dispose of that surplus as recommended.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And another part of good news, right, Marshall, we know that our new one functioned correctly with recent storms and it kept our server room running, right, Greg, and so we, it was a, it was a welcome. Very good.
That was a little, yeah.
Yeah, a little.
Hiccup, wasn't it?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That is it for Superintendent's report recommendations for this evening. Appreciate your support.
Okay, um, dropping down to communications. Uh, well, I don't know that we've got anything left on the August first meeting. Laura?
Um, you're correct. There will be nothing left as far as, um, business, except for the monthly operating bills, you know, the typical enclosed session.
Oh, we don't wanna forget public comment.
And public comment.
All right, well, and then there's always something, you know, probably to approve personnel or something, so we, yeah, we gotta, it might be the shortest meeting we ever have, but, okay.
And you know...
I didn't get a chance to, um, talk to you, Laura, but our policy council will not meet, um, before the August first meeting.
Okay.
I believe it's the seventeenth is when our next meeting is.
Of August. Okay, that sounds good.
All right, so then Laura, do you wanna drop down to board calendars?
Let's see. Okay, so for August, we are coming up on a busy time. Um, new teachers return Thursday and Friday of this week. And then, um, all teachers return for teacher workdays on August first. And we are, and that's also convocation and a board meeting. Convocation that morning is at nine-thirty at the Hornets Sports Center, so if you plan to attend, just let me know. I think I got, um, Ms. Anderson and Ms. Page, just so that we can reserve some seating for you. So, if you plan to attend. Then the tenth is the first day of school, and our work session is at seven PM on the twenty-ninth.
I'd like to make note, Laura, that the fourteenth is, um, the Education Foundation celebration on Sunday, the fourteenth, at Lakeland Pavilion. on Sunday, the fourteenth, at Lakeland Pavilion. Just remind everybody about that.
Yeah, from two to four, I believe.
Yes. Okay.
I should know, but Laura, do you know when the next Blue Ridge Virtual Governor School Board meeting is?
I do not, but I will check on that for you. It should be coming up, I believe, pretty soon.
See, it's, it's probably either the first Wednesday in August or September, I don't know which.
Yeah, I'll double-check and see if I've gotten that information.
I'll, I'll be in tomorrow, and
Yes, okay.
One morning, we'll get it straight.
That's a good plan. Okay, and then for September, right now, it doesn't look too booked. We have the holiday on the second, which is required by the code because of when we open school, and then Labor Day is also holiday, and our board meeting will be on the twelfth, and the work session on the twenty-sixth. And I'm sure there'll be things added to this once school starts.
So I guess that's it. Can we have the closed question, please?
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Orange County School Board convene a closed meeting for the following: discussion of personnel for the performance of a division employee, as authorized by Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia, for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Thank you, can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, we're in closed session, and we just stay in here, 'cause it's just personnel, right? Okay.